All right, it is 7:01. I'm going to call the meeting for a selectmen's order. Our first item of business is the pledge of allegiance. Charlie, would you like to lead us?
The pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and the republic which stands one nation under God, individual to every and justice for all.
Okay, I don't have any added agenda items tonight. But I would like to cloud a little bit based on those folks who may be joining us at different points in the meeting. So I'm going to stick to the original call or time being, but there may be points in time where I want to just jump around a bit to accommodate either staff time or visitors from away. So all members of the board of selectmen are present. Our next item is approval of meeting minutes for May 19. If you were in the pack, because everybody had a chance to review them. Motion has been made in second. Any discussion or corrections? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Public participation, this is one of two opportunities for members of public to address the board. If you'd like to address the board, please give your name and your address and state your business. Yes, sir.
Ball Anderson, 89 Main Street, Broadbrook. I want to comment on the plethora of public pride flags that are being handled in some areas. Middletown has upped and down all of Main Street. And all their flag. Both, white and gold. Enfield just put theirs out. I have no problem with the pride movement. I'm totally in favor. I'm totally against public facilities being used to display private entity flags. I say we have an American flag, we have state flag, and a POW flag. We're done. Nothing else should be on public property or on public display outside of private property. That's my opinion. And I will be fighting that as long as it takes.
Are there instances of them being displayed on town property?
No. I'm talking about the future. I'm seeing it happen. I don't want it happening in my town. That's, that's my stance.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Other comments from members of the public? Other comments from members of the public? Is there anybody online who would like to address the board of selectmen? Anyone online who would like to address the board of selectmen? Seeing none, there will be another opportunity for public participation towards the end of the agenda. Let's move now, if we could, to take up agenda item 9A. Discussion of Town Blight Property Maintenance Code, including Calabrese. That motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Ms. Calabrese, come on up. So, um, one of the things that I asked Ruth to look into, actually, over the course of the last few months or so, is the formulation of a more updated blight ordinance. By way of background, the existing property maintenance code is not enforceable. So I asked Ruth to do some due diligence, put together a draft. She did that. We've staffed this out twice, I believe, to actually troubleshoot or examine, I should say, components of the original draft. The process that we adopted was that Ruth would do a draft, the relevant staff departments would get together to review the draft and all the comments. She incorporated those comments into this version of it. Now it's before the board of selectmen for any comments or critiques that this board has. Then it would go to the town attorney for legal review before coming back to us to be sent to a town. So I think that's kind of the background. You want to walk us through?
Sure. First of all, just to address the need for blight ordinance. Of the 24 open complaints, we have, I mean, in our office, half of them are blight-related. So we really need the tools to help us get to compliance.
Do you want us to ask questions?
Oh, you can certainly ask questions as we go on. Just as an overview of the document, the ordinance, oh, you're ready. So it's open complaints. Half of them are zoning-related or weapons-related. The other half are blight. So we kind of have, just putting them off because we want a better tool.
Yeah, the doors were locked, the public can't.
So, as I was saying, the ordinance itself, as drafted, is 10 pages. The first page is really about context that would applies to the authority to establish a property maintenance official enforcement. And then it goes into definitions in the second section. There are three sections. So the first section is kind of level setting of what the ordinance is. The second section is a few pages of definitions, substance of enforceability. And then the meat of this ordinance is really in section 2-2. So this is where the enforcement officer would look. And they go out to review a complaint and see whether or not a violation is present. So here, we spend some time outlining the conditions that the individual would be looking at and going to assess. And so it speaks to whether or not there's a serious threat to help set in welfare. Second one there, several boards on building structure, parcel, gambler, and lockets, approved or not. What those conditions might be, missing, broken, imported windows, doors collapsing, deteriorating walls, exterior walls, which are the basement for the deep, container holder, breaks, loose or rotten material. So really pending danger. A blighted appearance. And then we get into more issues of refuge and rubbish and conditions that would be unhealthy. We have old ground grass, and we've got several complaints already this year for folks that the properties are vacant, they're not being maintained. Ooh, homeowners are concerned with ticks and, and whatnot. So this is the section that really talks through that warrant a violation. Really, this is the piece, the blight place. It's such an emotional issue for folks when they're voicing a complaint. They really want to feel good about where they live and not worry about the safety of their kids or have to look at something that's unpleasant. And so this is where at the end, it's kind of this, is there unreasonable interference with the enjoyment? Tried to give it some context so that it wouldn't be just subjective on one person. So that's why I say that's the meat of the ordinance itself. And then Article 3 is really process-driven. And I just want to, there's a diagram in, on the last page of the ordinance that goes through this process. And the reason I want to use it is because you can see all along the road, there's an opportunity to resolve the issue. If there's a situation where there's an immediate threat to health and safety, the town could get involved early on if the situation is not resolved by it. If there isn't, we're going to take an informal inquiry, initial approach to say, hey, we think there might be an issue here. Clean up these conditions. This will all go away. If not, you're going to get a citation all the way. And so each step of the way, there's what do you need to do to solve the problem, how much time you have. And if it's net, terrific. If it's not, go to the next phase down the line. Action. Which could include a citation and fine being issued. And once, once you get to that point, there's an opportunity for the property owner to appeal to a citation, for a citation hearing. And then there's a result from that hearing. And if there's a fine still in place and there's a failure to pay, that's another opportunity for and one of the things I'd mention is the hearing officers want the citation, the hearing officers want to figure out what the fine would be. So if a property owner doesn't ask for a hearing at 10 days, the assessment request will separate from the hearing officer. Tell you what the fine.
So on that point, when I was reading the, I, I was actually trying to figure out where are you going to be actually specifying the, the fine structure.
Right, I prior to this draft being written, I, I received a memorandum of law from Bowman. And in here, it talks about $100 a day. Give a citation, pass the deadline to comply, then it would be at $100 per day. And then if it becomes willful, it goes up to $250 a day.
So when I was reading the draft, I came across CGS 7148 GG, which was referenced in here a couple of times. And just to do due diligence, I actually read what the statute said. And if you look at the statute prior to that, 7-148 FF, it talks about a fee structure for this being adopted by the legislative body on an annual basis. Is that referenced in the Bowman?
About this year. It says, may, yeah, provide for special assessment. Didn't read that they were saying that, like, you would come up with that. When I read it, I thought it went back to the Congress. But this one stops at FF, didn't say anything about the GG.
What?
And all the amount. I was just referring, trying to find it in here, but it stopped at FF.
So 7148 FF is a special assessment on blighted property, would be the issue of blighted conditions. GG is notice to lean from all of the provisions. So.
I'm just not seeing the
It's in the end of, so it's in 7148 FF. C, it's the last section in that subsection. Annually, the legislative body shall review the amount of any assessments being posed pursuant to an ordinance adopted under this section and may revise such amount. So I wonder if that's a question for the canvas to say, is that, is that what we're required to do over the draft? If so, we could just do it at the beginning and tell me what happens.
What would that have been such annually, each year, or does it carry?
It says, annually, the legislative body shall review the amount of any assessments being posed pursuant to an ordinance adopted under this section and may revise such amount. Which actually makes some sense rather than putting a dollar amount in there, because you put a dollar amount of $50 per day. And in 15 years, $50 is a part of the nuisance. You know, I mean, just, that's, that's one of the things that we ran into with the property maintenance, right, that's what it was. We actually codified the dollar amount, then the dollar amount that was codified become, obviously, begin, obviously.
So I'll just point out, as we're talking about that, the very last section. Last item is reported. So at least annually, so it addresses this this way, where it says annually, or on the number of blight property maintenance code violation investigations conducted, any civil penalties, fines, special assessments, laws, things proposed by the town, and any remedial actions completed by the town. We could add.
Regulations for the establishment of fines? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Um, under procedure for complaints, it says complaint should be submitted using the published complaint form. So does that mean you're only accepting complaints from someone who would fill out that form? Or would you be allowing people to call with a complaint? Or you, are you, your staff is filling out the complaint form as someone is citing it, or?
The, the issue, though, and this Chief Marco brought this up on unrelated issues, you have a right to face your producer. So we really should not take anonymous complaints.
Okay.
The way I handle that, so as to satisfy that consideration with other complaints that have been submitted, is if somebody has made a complaint, that's, you know, I can verify, but they haven't been willing to give their name. I've submitted it under my name. So that at least there is a chain of record, but some items is protected. I don't know if that's a good idea or not. It just seemed like a good split of the apple.
So we typically direct folks to the complaint form online. If they're in the office, we'll handle it, but if not, direct them to the online form. Okay, thank you.
I'm going over to point two definition standards. In six frames, I think here for dragging. If I have a sliding glass door and I put a screen up and somebody comes and sees that Dean said it has a hole, why is that in relationship? Now, I don't have them, but I'm just saying, why would that be anybody's business? If I want to let flies come into the house, fly, if I open the front door, if I have a little hole out there, why would that be included in this?
I think it would have to go beyond, like, the assessment. It wouldn't be a single ordinary maintenance thing. Be blocked, because it's, it's, the way this is written, if you have one or more of these, it might, it might be a violation. It's going to be subjective.
And then my other question is, the foundation walls, they have cracks. There are cracks that are part of a state or building stuff.
Yeah.
If somebody has a crack and it's not linked in their house, if it doesn't create any kind of structure, why would that be a violation? I mean, because if it could be somebody 80, 90 years old, doesn't realize they have a crack, it has no desire to want to supplement the fix it because they're living on a fixed thing, well, why would that be additional if it doesn't meet any safety or health issues?
Again, it's going to, everything's relative, and I think going out and making the assessment, that's going to, that's going to come back. The, the building official would be involved.
So my recommendation, large chunks of this section of the draft were, came from a forum, a, a template ordinance. Remember where that came from?
I think Newington.
So some of this is pre-existing, and that's kind of part of the point of the conversation today as far as the
But I, I have an issue with putting something forward that's subjective, because it's subjected to me, and he doesn't like me. And it's objected to him. I could have a different interpretation than he has of what it should be. Um, I just have a problem with that.
All right, so I've got a flag concerns of 2D and 2G.
So I've added that list a little bit, and I do think this is a great idea and a great start. I have a bit of a concern with I and J, so you know, for a number of reasons, people may want a little bit longer grass, and like, we just got from no mow May. You're not supposed to mow, you know, and as a beekeeper, I gave it a shot, you know? And so, you know, if somebody liked that, in my opinion, tough, right? Because I mowed my lawn on the 31st, but I wouldn't want to have somebody then take me and beat me with a hammer, you know, with a blight ordinance over that, right? So I, I think we ran into this last time, we did this back in 2011, where this was
It's amazing.
It, it is. All this stuff just comes back, but, yeah. So I, I'm a little bit, a little bit, I don't know if 12 inches is quite right, you know, maybe it's more. But I do understand, like, somebody not mowing their lawn. I have an neighbor that doesn't often, but, I mean, does it rise to blight? I'm not 100% sure. That and something else, you know, that and some junk all over the place, you know? But so I'm a little bit not solid on that one. And then J, vegetation of any type. You know, that could be a tree that somebody doesn't like. Well, and again, it's super subjective, and then you're going to force somebody to do something about that when you just cost them 1,500 bucks, you know?
Well, yeah, but the rest of J says vegetation of any type, in the opinion of property maintenance officer, is injurious to public health or safety. So if there is a, if there's a tree that's about to fall on a road, or if there is, somebody has, you know, a particular type of poison, something, I use somatic, oh, whatever, that, that could cause a public health concern because it's it's, you know, I mean, I don't
That's not a public health concern, that's the, the personal family's concern, right?
You know? Well, in that, in the poison something example is, but a potential downed tree would become a public safety concern.
But that tree would generally be the town's problem in the first place, if it was in the right way.
I suppose so. I would tell you, I have trees that are outside of the town right away that are not in great health and it comes down.
Yeah, no, and there's, there's like a process for that, right, already, you know, from insurance company to insurance company and whatnot, you know? That doesn't rise to a blight thing, like, that's already an issue. It's not a blight issue. It's a property line, property owner issue, you know? You know, I'm not saying it shouldn't be in there, but I just want to be careful about making things too broad. And, you know, something that is potentially an issue isn't really an issue, but all of a sudden, it's forced on somebody and now they got to pay, that removed, you know?
You guys going in?
I mean, I can see Alan's point on some of that. But other than that, and for everything here, and I thank you, Ruth, and your staff for working on this.
Sure. It's the best one I've seen in 15 years, so. A few points is, you know, I have to agree that, you know, some of this stuff is, that, you know, I have two homes, and they would fail this list, both of them. Consider either of my properties to be unattractive for blight. However, one of the houses is over 100 years old, and the foundation is consistent of brick. And the other half foundation is made of red stuff, and there are cracks and holes. And this floor itself used to be dirt at one time. Built drastically in that regard.
So you're MD?
I'm D.
Very young.
Garage unattached to that house is also 100 plus years old, and
Is it, I'm sorry, is that still the?
No, this doesn't even have a foundation. It's, it's unsubordinate.
What's the, what's the gradual?
Um.
What I'm trying to do is figure out, okay, what, which of these do we need to work on, which G's do we need to take out, which of these are okay to go? So that's why I'm trying to zero you guys' comments.
So I have circled B, C, I, and J.
So say we're all under B, they're after maybe carrying.
It says indoor contains holes, breaks.
Yeah, yeah, it would fall under that.
Which one do you want to see? I would say collapsed and deteriorating exterior walls.
Right.
That's it. A lot of subjectivity that
No, I can see if your, your house met all of the criteria here, A to J, then that would be a safety concern. Right, and I get that, but individually.
Yeah, I think, I think you can find, you know, one of these violations on probably 75% of properties in town.
Mine could, yeah. I mean, with the storm that we had, I had four pine trees from my neighbor's yard fall down on my fence. And I, I mean, little by little, you're cleaning it up, but I mean, it's, it's very difficult to
I think that the, the policy takes that into account, you know? It's, I think it's the people that are just refuse.
I mean, I agree, there's definitely a need for it, but I mean, it is kind of open to interpretation of it.
Want to show some examples to see if we can agree what blight is. It's in the street.
But I vote my mind, I don't want to show mine. Is that blight? No.
No.
So subjective.
Is that blight? That looks like wooden, possibly other construction debris. Certainly overgrowth, stumping, broken windows, missing siding.
It's getting there. I mean, the person that lives next to that thinks it's blighted, I guess that, then it is blighted, right, from the standpoint of this policy, right?
I also think that all depends on where the house is situated. I mean, I'll use the house on more of a roll, that every time I try to buy out our apartments and stuff, to me, that's the intent of a blight. Get rid of the mattress that is bringing the lights to the neighbors, and it's all manicured, the area. But a guy that has four or five acres of land in the backyard, and they choose to stockpile whatever they want to stockpile, who am I to say, you can't do that on your property? That's a problem on that. It's not affecting me, it's not affecting anybody else.
Is that
property. Property.
Is that white?
Just is viewed from the street?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Why?
Because I personally think it's ugly.
Many of those cars aren't rich.
Right, most of them.
It's very.
There you go.
Is it? So this, this all is a way of illustrating, we certainly have a problem we need to deal with. I think. Well, and Ruth is, I'm sorry.
This is the best attempt I've seen so far.
I don't know where that is.
But it was like day class. I was worried like.
How about that? There's so many trees in there.
It looks like those were from there.
Yeah, I'd say no.
Again, it's all depends on where it is.
Right, so.
If you go to the other side of town, if you go to Laurel Circle, if that stuff was parked down Laurel Circle in the driveway, it'd be concerned that that's. Can't, couldn't be there because it's a.
So I think. There is going to, with something like this, anytime there's something like this, there's going to be a subjective determination. As, as much as we try and workshop it so that it is objective, it is ultimately going to be a subjective determination. But one of the other things that's incorporated in the ordinance is an appeal process, which is by nature designed to remove some of that stuff. So. I, I think if we're going to move forward with doing some sort of a blight ordinance, we need to collectively be comfortable acknowledging that. There is going to be some subjectivity, but at least there's an off ramp in case the subjective determination or the deciding. Officer makes the wrong call. Um, so. For those, those subsections in two point two that we flagged, let's figure out if there is wording changes that can make those better. Or if they don't need to be in there at all, and then see if we can. Well, let's see where that is.
Well, I think J is, was worded properly, but I, I do feel like that could run into some issues, but. I'm not sure if you, if you have I, why do you need J really? I guess you're going directly after trees.
In, in, I were going after, directly after people who are not mowing their lawn. You know, and then we have had complaints over time. I, I can tell you several addresses where actually one of them is in South Windsor, if I, if I knew more specific, it's on Rice. Uh, Winterfell, the guy spends the summer not mowing his lawn. Ever, to the point where you would lose my three year old. That's what, you know, I mean, it's, how do you, at what inch height or what duration of time does that become light? I don't know what it is. Uh, and this is, I'll quote Potter Stewart, who defined, uh, he was a Supreme Court Justice who defined pornography as you know it when you see it. That's kind of the same thing here. I mean.
Sure, sure, but so. I'm not talking about pornography.
That's, that's the actual case law.
I, I know the case, but the, in, in grass, right? So let's say I decide that I want to let some grass grow so then I could let my sheep temporarily mow it for me because I'm getting. There is, yeah. So what if I want to do no mow May?
Well, you've been the fact.
What's that?
You've been the fact.
So, but what if I don't have these? What if I just want to do?
I don't want to do my lawn in May because I have like debilitating grass allergies.
Right? I mean, like, so I just, with that, I think the problem with it for me is that, that. Actual height, although you do kind of need some sort of way to measure when is it too long, you know?
It takes a while for grass to grow twelve inches tall.
Not May.
That's not, I went away on a ten day vacation. That's something different.
But twelve inches in our environment, such as your home, that's agriculture, it's all in the woods. On my backyard, that's to the woods and nobody else left or right is different than Prospect Hill Road. Um, when you have this one that has multiple yard, this person has a cell, so you're, and this one's just, doesn't care, you know? I think that's the difference.
Certainly, yeah, I, I would agree with that. And that's there in life.
Right, which goes by what he says, when you see it, you know it.
Or you don't. I mean, so in, in my case, I would go ahead and appeal that all the way. I fight that to as far as I possibly could.
Right, and if I'm the. If I'm the city city station here, officer, and somebody comes to me and says, I, you know, I got cited for blight. My, my lawn was as tall as it was because I'm doing no, no mow May. Okay, there's actually like an established public policy. There's, there's a reason for that. It's not like. My lawnmower broke in two thousand nineteen, you know, I mean, there's, there's a difference.
Sure.
You're not, you're not buying what I'm selling, are you?
Not a hundred percent, but, uh, but, you know, I'm not saying taken out of there.
I'll see you in court, son.
And you put a lot of trust in, in government. Don't laugh.
Well, moving on to happier things, what about the, the umbrage it took with their work with foundation walls which contain open cracks and breaks? Special consideration to crumbling foundation.
So I think something in that verbiage should be added to that pose a threat to. I don't know, again, kind of like what Jay has.
You want to qualify, public health and safety qualifier?
Yeah, I mean. That house has been there for a hundred and something years. If it hasn't fallen down yet, it's not ever gonna fall down. I'm sure Mr. Masters' house is the same way, you know? His foundation is probably made of a few stones and a couple of bricks, you know, that they found in the field. And it looks probably horrible from down in the basement, but is that house going anywhere? Heck, no.
But the house that's leaning like this off the foundation that's pointed towards.
This is obviously for commercial.
Yes, that's a good point. It is.
I guess the who owns the utility pole is the question.
Alan owns one of them.
And I already say that because it was a public movement town that looked like they took a brace and put it this way, and the original pole somehow can now. And then the rear comes and you have visions of that pole coming down and that brace letting go. Uh, you know where I'm referring to. And it's been that way for ever. I'm assuming it's ever so.
All right, so.
Hope don't give them all that credit. One portion on the, on chart on the bottom. Some violation remedy by Tom, press the payment issue payment made or lean file and then says violation resolve. If you put a lean on somebody's home because they can't do the repairs and then some ways along the way that are able to come up with some money. Through whatever avenues on. This is its resolve. Can they then pay off the lien? Fix it and then the lien be removed? Because I don't see it stated here anywhere. I'll just say to somebody for Louis spoke if they can't afford to fix the home of the living, because that's all that can afford to live it. And then you put a lien on their home and I get it because it's for safety reasons and all of that. And then through some handout or some program that may come along or somebody may say, you know, I'll help you a little bit. Have the lien removed if that stuff gets fixed. People's memory when the lien is put on there and it's going to go up for, for sale in a period of time.
So if the situation is rectified.
So that's.
It's lean, if they're there and it's not fixed yet, the lien is pretty much fine. Give a lien because the town came in and fixed it. Or you.
That's, that's covered in, in her, her example is covered in G two.
G two.
Any violation which constitutes notions may be evaded by the town at expense of the owner or less or lessy or any other person in possession of, or any. Any one of them to whom the PMO has given not less than ten days written notice of intention to evade such. Such, such expense may be collected by the town in civil action against anyone, and that's.
But once the lien is put on there. Part of they get it off. Everything.
I mean, follow that through if you're. You've got somebody that's. Economically disadvantaged and, uh, they're living in a place that for whatever reason they have that. Come in there and, you know, because the neighbor doesn't like that front porch wasn't fixed or something and. End up doing that work and then take that from them. Where do they live then? I mean, because if you do a lien eventually, it's going to be a tax sale, right? It's going to be.
That's pretty much. And, and there are specific statutes the government has, so it's not just. The lien just means that we're the, the debtor first, you know, so we're the first ones to get paid.
So you would actually fix somebody's home?
If we have to from a public safety or public health perspective.
Oh, okay.
Well, you know, if, if you're a breeding ground for rats, that'd be, that creates a public health. So we would have to step in and say, we're going to fix that and then here's your bill.
I, I get that, that makes sense. And then H has the special consideration. Kind of gets to if you're not.
And there's. All right, back to two point two. Do we want to try and reword these? Do we want to try and strike these? I don't want to weaken this too much. You know, if we put something in place, it's got to be effective, otherwise there's no point to do it.
When I look at this in this locality and what comes to mind to me is rental property that has been left. Just to decay. Collectively, all that stuff makes good argument. So I don't have a problem with lucky. It's the individual judgment call that I have a problem with. But if there's an appeal process, then I guess I can move with that.
At the risk of putting him on the spot, Rich, may I ask you a question about, from a, a public safety consideration? Foundation walls with open cracks or breaks, does that present any, does that raise any flags to use the bylaw?
Did you hear me screaming down there?
I did not.
No, it's just. An open crack in your foundation is not a big deal unless I see rats going in and out of there every day and it starts to be a health test. But this ordinance is perfect if that's it come out. Okay, I noticed I, I was called to your property because you that just, this is just wrong. This by itself, I'm going to just fix it. The rest of it is. You know, it adds to, that's all. I think you need to leave it this way that. It opens the door for the person who's. Enforcing this to bring it to attention. And ultimately, you guys will say, no, you're, you're all wins. It's not a problem.
So you're satisfied with the verbiage as it stands and then the, the appeal process?
I agree with that.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but.
Putting a lot of trust in government.
Well.
I did the exact same thing today. I was the only one and all of a sudden I realized it's honeybees all over the floor. I left all the over, went on. Huge patches, so it's the top of this road. And it's only going to be for a little while, then it'll go down. If somebody complained about that, I think she'd be very disturbed. But the person that's enforcing this is going to see through that. So it's not an issue. But yeah, if my grass is like this, it has been that way for a year already and now it's coming to get, that's why.
Don't shed any light for it, like.
Don't for a fire hazard.
I, I guess I have a problem with the seven days, but I'd like to see that extended a little bit.
How many?
Fourteen and a minute.
Take it. I want to do fourteen, I'll do fourteen. I, you know, I'm fighting. Everybody, anybody want to fight for G?
No.
Jesus.
Going home to a screen checker.
I will, I will make another plea for J because, because of the qualifier that it needs to be in the PMO's opinion, injurious to public healthers.
I don't have a problem with that only because today I read an article on Lori. I think it's until somebody had posted a picture of some plant, they didn't know what it was. And it turned out to be some kind of poisonous thing and it wasn't for the neighbor complaining about it, the guy would have done anything because it really looked like nice green. Leaves, uh, but it, it kills someone. So I would be glad to move to that purpose because if we don't know, we don't know, but it's a complaint to the way we, we will want to have it removed. Even though it looks nice in the dust.
Despite the fourteen days.
I have a problem with opinion, I guess, and that's, that's my problem. With that.
Well, qualified. So there needs to be something that, that in, what I understand had to be is, um, there would need to be. Some public health or safety documentation that says that this vegetation causes a problem. Not just like, I don't like this, but you know, that it actually could create a, a problem for somebody else.
So why don't we take in the opinion of the property maintenance officer right out of there, just leave it. Vegetation of any type which is injurious to public health.
Yeah, right.
You guys have meaning?
No, I'm good. I mean, for D, I, I was in favor of adding like a public health or safety disclaimer there, but if Rich, I mean, his. Qualified opinion there feels that it's okay that way.
Any other sections we want to talk about?
Just, just open up a new line there. On C, it says exterior walls are faced by graffiti. I don't have a problem with that. Does that also mean?
You're still in two two, right?
Yeah, uh, you know, like, you know, retaining wall or, you know, like, for instance, next to the highway.
I would think so. I would think that would fall under the same definition.
Put a camera on that wall.
Okay, so what I would like to do then, um. We don't need a motion on this tonight, um, but Ruth has notes. She'll incorporate those notes into the draft and send it out to hold and commonly for review. Once we get it back, uh, it'll be on the agenda for one last look from us and then a vote sent.
And you're going to have four to the last page?
Yes.
That sounds good? Okay, now. Your work on this. Um, I'd like to take up agenda item. Nine B, discussion successes and accomplishments to Senator O'Hara and State Representative Fuss. I have a motion. Still move? Is there a second?
Second.
Major seconded, all in favor? Post. Senator, representative, welcome. Happy to see you.
I think we'll feel this collaboratively. I don't know. I, I kind of went by pager X report orders. Um, first, I'm really super honored to be here with my speech colleague, but I'm really excited to be here because I think he's been there because of you all now. We have a very functionally collaborative relationship. We have a very functionally collaborative relationship with Ken Hall and the entirety Spencer delegation, including Brett Hall. And I just feel like a lot of our successes are due to a really dynamic collaboration within our delegation. We have a really good working relationship across party lines, across the board, across institutions. And so every success that we have to talk about this session is because we are. And so I'm really grateful that everyone, uh, to get, that's where we are. So the first thing that I think we should talk about is recount that a year ago, we delivered one point two million dollars in bonding to the town of East Windsor. This year, thanks to Senator O'Hara's leadership, we delivered another eight hundred thousand dollars in bonding to the town of East Windsor for projects. So I actually looked up the past fifteen years of bond history for the district and we have hit historic amounts of municipal funding. In this last legislative session. So I'm really excited. I think it's a good, good news for the community. We've set the seniors nursing home standards. That's more your.
Your wish. Sure. You know, what we had heard recently with some of the challenges, especially during the pandemic was the seniors, the nursing homes, it was neglect and there was abuse. And because the families were not able to visit and, and we have been working to make sure that the seniors are protected in our communities. And, and make sure that they have their rights in assisted living environments. The nursing homes are overseen by the Department of Public Health. But the assisted living facilities are not necessarily watched as closely. And the memory units are also not watched very closely. So there's an area of opportunity to fix that. So we created working groups to try and assess that and, and, and working to get more involvement of Department of Public Health. So that's something that's going to start to move in the right direction. But what you've learned is there truly, if the families are not involved, people are at a risk of not being taken well care of.
Like somewhere on my, I'm sure this is all the time, but I, we have a lot of elderly residents in the community. Those children live out of the district. And I did not expect as a freshman legislator to get emails and calls from people's children who don't live in the district and who are worried about their loved ones and. Progress in this area means that we will have more courses, more opportunities for oversight when we get those calls and how we can sort that. The fiscal conservative community is important for you all to know that we are eight point six million dollars below our spending cap. That spending, we have a smart fiscal policy that's turned to the state one. And it's an important process that was procedurally followed in this budget that was adopted by person. So. Big win for this budget. You're going to hear a lot of really good things that we deliver financially in this budget and think this is really responsible. There was.
There was just an article from the comptroller out today saying that the projected surplus is nine hundred and forty-six million dollars.
I know. Yes, crazy. It's a really good time to, to be working on these things, to prioritize the communities. It's good to have folks who are going to champion when the finances of the community are good. This is less of an issue in East Windsor, but in Arlington, this is really important to me. This is actually where I got involved in politics. We had someone who was a municipal leader and he was found to be a potential. There's a trafficking, child trafficking scandal. This year, we made significant progress on the sexual misconduct policies that the state holds, including creating assessment policies. To look at how early intervention, early screening and early identification and having data to then import policies to make sure that those kinds of egregious practices never happen. The juvenile justice bills were adopted by Parkinson Lane. These bills came out of a bipartisan working group, but East Windsor Police Department was critical in advocacy for those policies about. Except for police departments, it's really helpful. You guys know, I get how cool it is to send an email and be like, I'm a police related matter. Can I get an opinion quickly on X, Y, Z? At very odd times and get responses in real time. So the East Windsor Police Department was really helpful. There were a couple of police related bills. One, we decreased paperwork and traffic, first certain traffic related incidents for police departments reporting. We enacted a bill to support law enforcement's mental health. And most importantly, to the town of East Windsor, the ask that these Windsor Police Department had. We changed the requirements that were in the police capability bill for Kalia training for police departments to be post. And so now post is accepted. That's like saved the town a lot of money. It is the same rigorous standards of police certification and training. Your police department has already done that and exceeded those expectations. And now that requirement will be satisfied for them. Do you want to talk about the child?
Sure, maybe we can talk about quite a few of the bills as well.
Yeah.
That's not what the Bowser bill.
Which was a pejorative until it passed.
It was not. It was not because your name is at the capital. Yeah.
Fifteen minutes before the end of the session, the Bowser bill is passed. And, and I'm sweating a big competition and then Jason is on the side of the safe situation. You're the phone. And so this is coming. Don't worry. It's going to hang there. And I'm also not sure at that point it's going to come forward. It was part of the consent calendar. And then finally, I see that I almost pass out with happiness because I want to make sure that Bowser bill gets passed. And this is a bill that's going to allow economic development opportunities in the town of East Windsor and many other towns in the state of Connecticut. And Jason had identified that, that area of opportunity about two, three years ago, and it was. Finally hurdles for one reason or the other. And thankfully, it was time issues and so on. But this time around, thankfully, it passed. So it was exciting stuff from that.
Thank, thank you for staying so vigilant on that, told of you. So, so that other folks know, we have an ordinance in town that allows for municipalities to enter into tax abatements as a means of encouraging economic development. And the ordinance delegates to the Board of Selectmen, the deal making authority. The statute up until that bill that was passed did not allow for that power to be telephoned. Which means that every time that we, that, that part of our ordinance did not work. So every time we had one of these things, it had to go to town meeting, even though the town meeting said, we don't want to have this. So that put us at a, a timing disadvantage to towns that have a manager council form of government where their legislative body is the council versus a, a town meeting, which has a whole different notice component to it. So the turnaround time and the response time that the town already wanted to, to grant to this body is now allowable under law. So thank you for pushing that.
And then the other thing is, every other town is able to compete, but East Windsor was not having the same opportunity.
And.
Yeah, and yeah. So, so that's why it was an opportunity to, to make sure we fix that. So you will have. A wonderful location. It's, it's such an amazing access. So now you will have that opportunity to be able to have good conversations with new economic development opportunities with that. Should we talk a little bit about the children's bills?
Um, yes, I have, I have a list of children's bills. I will defer to you on the early childcare stuff, but I do want to say, because I know it's a bit close to Sarah, as we talked about these earlier. Is we expanded online protections for kids and victims of domestic violence. We allowed for ways for people to opt out of public, of public registry where their name is posted online on the Secretary of State's website, for example, where they substantiate and relate cases of domestic violence. This is really important when it comes to safety of members of our community. There's more money to improve their qualities. There's a grant opportunity in East Windsor, this budget, like a lot of money that can be pulled down in a lot of different ways. We have a, um, you know, town hall that's really quick to pull down. So yeah, let's talk about that.
Sure, sure. At, at the current now, I'm serving as the Chair of the Kids Committee and I'm also the acting Chair of the Public Health Committee and the Vice Chair of Insurance and Real Estate, Vice Chair of Housing. So, and, and on appropriation as well as judiciary, as well as planning and development. So it's sort of a lot of things were moving around in different directions. But we were able to get some of the very critical things. This entire session, I think emotionally, everybody had recognized that post pandemic and hopefully post pandemic. We are, we have seen a lot of challenges that children were experiencing. You look at, and this was a symptom. If a child has to wait in the emergency department for a week to get a bed with an acute behavioral issue or depression or anxiety. That tells us that that's a symptom of a broken system. And the system was broken in a state which has experienced such trauma for children who, at the state that has invested initially a fair amount of intellectual, financial resources into fixing this. That we were in a position like the rest of the country not addressing that. So there was a comprehensive strategy, a bipartisan effort, three bills, Senate Bill one, Senate Bill two, because of the priority and importance of this. And making sure that Senate Bill one was working on the school end. And Senate Bill two was also working, between the two bills, we were working on prevention strategy. So the early childcare centers, because that industry was dying. And, and early childcare educators, they were not able to work. The reason being that they did not have insurance, health insurance, they were not making enough money. And if there was one child who had COVID, it would be very difficult for them to be able to work. They would quarantine back and forth during the time of, with, with earlier variants. A lot of those resulted in, in the workers leaving the occupation altogether. And, and if you do not have childcare, you do not have a workforce. You do not have a workforce, you don't have an economy. It's all linked together. So it's the first domino that, that falls. So we were able to, and, and the federal, some of the federal bills had been stuck for variety reasons. And as a result, we were not able to address the immediate needs at this time. So this will need a lot more support going forward, but at least what we've done is we've put enough resources to keep the industry alive. But also create a pipeline of the next generation and multiple generations of childcare educators. And, and the first three to five years of the child's education is very critical and care is very critical. And then after that, you obviously have better systems that are in place, but that has been a very weak spot. So we've been able to put resources there. And, and House Bill five zero zero one was a, a bill which looks at the entire spectrum of care of child behavioral health and there are gaps in various parts. And the gaps were because we had not invested as much as we should have in the past. And, and we've set out with all the different organizations, hospital systems, and, and we're able to plug all those gaps. And then fix all of those and we put resources. This is bipartisan. Everybody puts their heads together. And, and this was very heartwarming to see that we had Democrats, Republicans, Senate and House, everybody put their heads together, came together and then put these bills and, and the governor's office. And yesterday they were, we were signed and into law. And so that was probably one of the best, biggest things that has happened in the number of other bills we were talking about as well. Onto you and then we'll come back.
Yeah, of course.
This is a show.
Yes.
We're one person missing, but the, in the next episode.
So just so you all know, this is the shortest session in the history, like it, the way the legislative calendar works, you start like the third Wednesday after the first Monday of February and. But that's how it works. And then you send the first Wednesday after the first Monday in May. That's not made up. It's very honest. So this is the shortest the calendar can ever fall, the legislative calendar. So we had the smallest amount of time to do this work. And I just, like, the amount of work we did this amount of time is really still my, going to me. What makes me really excited is one of my champion efforts, as you all know, East Windsor houses more than their fair share of solar arrays. And so, and that is something lots of people email us about. When a big solar array comes up and prime and important farmland goes away. And people have really strong feelings about that. And so I help this bipartisan collaborative group with energy and technology leaders. The energy and technology committee is going to be my second, second doctor in life. I'm very excited to see how that all pans out. Please don't miss it to me honorably and I don't actually have to go there for dissertation yet, but. So E and T.
Do you look at the government too?
Somebody needs to grant me a doctorate. So we held this bipartisan meeting. We talked to solar stakeholders that are local. And we talked to farmers and we talked to people who are investing in solar. And we tried to look at the way that we wouldn't tell a farmer what to do with their land. Because people need economic viability in their home and their retirement plan. And it's a farmer's choice what to do with the property that they own. But also a way to take pressure off of farms for solar development. And the best way that we figured to do that in this sort of creative brainstorming thinking was to increase the caps of the amount of solar arrays that could be put out on that residential and commercial solar buildings. So every building now can maximize out the number of solar panels on a roof instead of just putting what their building needs. So that we meet more of the state's solar needs with existing roof space and existing roofs and infrastructure. And we also lit raised the caps for these commercial programs, which means we'll be needing more of our solar needs with the rooftop type and less with the big farm field type. Which is really important for our communities. And so that bill honestly took the most like labor for me to get to where it needed to. That was like the most political experience I've ever had in the legislature so far. Lots of money in energy and technology, lots of lobbying efforts, lots of motives around that. And so that was one of my post-graduate moments. We also changed the notice requirements for pesticide applications, really important. As we spent some time this morning on a call for another constituent well water contamination issue related to pesticide application. So we want to make sure that people's water are safe. And one of the ways that we can do that is making sure that pesticides applications are perfectly, one thing that we can do with requirement.
All right, some of the things, the easiest funding has been protected for our town here. We made sure of that part and, and indoor air, we talked about that, touch on that. And lead poisoning as well. So there's funding for that. And this was, look, a lot of the, the benefits that you've seen in this session is because we have federal funds. And, and that's a reality and, and an important reality as a result of which we were able to pay our debt back, a lot of the debt back. About one point six billion before and then three point five, or two point six more. So over five or so billion dollars of our obligation that we paid in advance before they were due. Which means we are going to see a benefit of some three hundred million dollars because we are paying it early, just like we pay our home early, if you are able to, we actually save more money than you. So we have that benefit. And, and subsequently, we have three point three billion dollars extra and even more now in our rainy day fund, which the rating agency that recognized that and improved our rating even further. Which means that we will see far less cost to the taxpayers going forward because when we make a bridge now, the interest rate is going to be much less. So perfect timing, perfect investments to be able to look at that while we're investing in various things. So we have talked about that poisoning. If a child that is exposed to lead in their home environment, their IQ is going to be impacted, the future is going to be impacted. And if we can prevent that, we actually have a generational impact and improvement in that's in, in one. And many of the homes, older homes have that of problems. So there's ways to fix it through the state support right now. So we have that, that with the school indoor air, we all know that certain percentage, five to seven or in sometimes 10% of the student and the teacher population that has allergies and has, but they're impacting it quite a bit. And now we'll be able to have some funding available to address that as well. But it would have to be grant based.
Um, so I am the General Law Committee. You did a couple of things that I think of, of interest. First, we extended the provision for promoted hybrid meetings. Which, as you all know, has significantly improved the accessibility of our town government. That is actually something that I got a lot of emails about, that people felt like that was important to the community. And we've also seen the adoption of one of the most robust consumer data privacy laws in the country. And as you may know, our data is bought and sold as a real commodity. And particularly around our children's data that exists on the internet, there's real concerns about that piece of our safety moving forward. So. I'm going to share with the first election later, the major acts report, which I'm sure you've seen already, but.
I haven't seen the shirt.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So then, and you can send that out to folks that gets into a lot more detail of some of these bills and their impact. But. I am really excited about that. I'm saying a lot about my child's future, the data that exists about around the event. So.
There was one of the conversations that we had, and I think Sarah, you were part of the conversation about the police and, and the trauma that they have. So we have actually a bill on mental health needs for police officers and have a prevention strategy and support strategy for them and, and sources we are going to take care of them. Which is going to save us all the experience that the police officers have. We cannot even imagine what they see and how that impacts them. And, and that's something very critical. So we have been able to put some resources in bill around that as well. You also have a, a penalty, increase the penalty if, if there's one of our K nine unit dogs that is attacked by somebody illegally, there's going to be significant impact on the issue. Force for that. We have police officers. And I think there are. I'm just judging on opioid settlement. Thanks to Attorney General, we have a pretty strong opioid settlement funding that's going to come. We wanted to make sure that there was a protection in place because in the past, when the tobacco settlement money came in, it was not being used for tobacco cessation. And, and we have actually fixed that bill to make sure that the money is going to be used for children, not to, to be able to protect them going forward. And it's going to be used for the purpose it's intended for. For the, for the opioid settlement, we have actually made sure that that's going to be the same thing, that money will not be used for anything else. It will only be used for. It will only be used for opioid and addiction, there'll be challenges in our community. So that was important.
Well, Senator, I was chairing that meeting. I reached out to our police department because one of the things that the police department had asked for was Narcan shortage for when people have overdosed on opioids. We are going through four doses of Narcan to resuscitate someone who has overdosed. And so that was something that this department, when they met with us, they asked for support with is getting more Narcan because it's substantially a growing part of the police department's budget. The Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services has adopted a policy that they are encouraging movement of Narcan resources to avoid waste. So police departments will do that quickly, but schools don't. But they need to have them on hand. And so they are facilitating this program to cycle the products through, so less is wasted, but more is available where it needs to be, and they're also supplying Narcan.
Just going to touch on a couple of things. And I do want to talk about one more topic, and I did get a text, I have to be in another place. So can I leave in five minutes? But in five minutes, I'm going to just talk about some of the things. And then the super selectman asked me about a question earlier, so I'll try to touch on that topic as well. Now, one of the things is the catalytic converters. We have made sure that this market that's out there, that is part of the problem. There are multi-pronged issues around the youth crimes. One of them is that the youth services bureau need more help. So there's a preventive strategy that money actually be allocating more resources for needs. There are also much stronger legal bills and outcomes if somebody is going to be the current individual who does it more than once. They're going to have much, they'll get into bigger trouble. There will be a way to keep track of them as well if they are involved in such activity bipartisan bills. Actually, both of us are co-sponsored of that bill as well. We had a pretty good conversation in the judiciary. So I was involved in in that part of the bill. And and then the catalytic converters, that's a Senate bill. Where the issue is that if there was a very protective way where you cannot sell it in in the black market, you're not going to be able to sell it. You're not going to steal it. So that's the the protection that's been created because that's something that's been happening. And that's part of protection strategy.
Normally sell one catalytic converter per license per day to a stripper. So they can't steal 35 and sell.
That's great. So one of the things that you talked about was about the property with our tribes. Not our tribe, but our tribe in the state. This is an area for everybody's back. But of course, this is an issue that makes us have must mixed feelings. Some of those meetings brought anger and frustration because we were expecting to have a casino by this time. But there's no casino at this time. And part of that, we've been part of those conversations, many of those meetings. We've been able to have meetings with the leaders of the tribes around this aspect. In the vast budget, I was able to work with Senator Austin to see if there was $1 million that could be added to the town of East Windsor from the the funding that the tribes give to our state. And we had that in the budget, but we need to have everybody on the same page. And that was not approved. And there's been offers written and have written an offer and in general inquiry room and offered that it was the right thing to do to push to get the $1 million because our taxpayers are hurting in our town because of the property not being used and not being part of generating tax. So that's been our frustration. So the hope had been, and it still is, that this is one of the best pieces of property in the entire region over here. And then we need to make sure that it generates taxes. And and the first select and bao's leadership has been phenomenal, but you've been very clear where you stand and what needs to be done to try and and take some action. We have been in communication with the the leaders of the tribe to try and get them to be on board to make a a sales plan. They obviously, from a financial point of view, do not need to sell it. And that's part of our frustration as well. Yes, you are financially fine, but why do the East Windsor community have to pay for that when when you're not using this for the purpose that it was intended? And this is part of a bigger battle that is between MGM and and the tribes. And so we are sort of in the midst of. And and what is the right thing to do for our community? And and for that purpose, I think, I I know there's a conversation about taking stronger action from the town side. And and that's something I understand and recognize that you feel that that's the next step. These will support you, whatever you do. I'm still hoping that we'll be able to get everybody to the table and and have them recognize that the town is serious about this and the town taxpayers are serious about this. And we need to identify ways of making the town whole, one way or another. And we cannot do this in this budget cycle because there was no funding on the the tribes that had to be allocated during this shorter session. But the longer session next time, we would be able to look into that aspect. But I I'm hoping that we can work out a way with the tribes to be able to do this. So so one of the other challenges is that there it's not one tribe. There are two tribes that have created an entity together. So both of them have to agree to it, which is a complexity. And both tribes have their own governance structure. So you are talking about three governments, town government and two tribe governments, all coming together to to come up with a plan. And they've been that there's a hurry right now. And that's why you may have to take your action while we try to bring them to the table and have them understand what needs to be done. So that's, that's going to be work in progress. We've had about three or four meetings in the last year and a half or two years, including meetings with the governor's office as well to come up with a way to get the state help out and and bringing this conversation to the next level. And and that has not panned out yet fully. So I don't know if I missed anything, but. So do you want to ask anything about this question before I I run?
On on any legislation?
Is it okay?
Yeah, of course, yeah, of course.
And if it's a difficult question, I'll have Jim.
Any questions for our legislators? I I want to just, you know, I know you have to leave, and I I won't uncover your time more than I have to. But I suppose that's not true, I'm going to. But I just want to thank you both and Representative Paul as well for the accessibility that you always provide to me and to to people in our community. You are a great team, the three of you together, bipartisan, bicameral. I I can pick up the phone and call anyone of you or text anyone of you as the case may be while you're in the session in bed. But I I just, the the dynamic, the the dynamic you bring and the leadership you bring is just so energetic, so encouraging, so enthusiastic, and and I'm grateful that you guys are there fighting for us, the three of you.
It's a blessing. East Windsor is so full of potential, it's an amazing town. And it's getting better every day. And the excitement that we have with the potential and the opportunities for East Windsor are phenomenal. You have all the right people doing the right job with the right mindset. And we just need to make sure that we don't get in your way. We empower you rather than slow you down as a state representative. And that's what we're hoping to be able to do, and we look forward to that.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you're still, or still your representative.
Just quit what? So one, there's a really great bill with like one of the most moving pieces of testimony that I've ever heard on firefighter cancer relief program. I don't know if you all know, but East Windsor recently, ahead of schedule compared to another town that are represented, removed P pass bones from fire trucks. The consequences of things that firefighters are exposed to, individual insulation. Tell them that we have to make sure we're taking care of our first responders, we have to take care of our police department, we have to take care of our fire department. So we've expanded the firefighter cancer relief program pretty substantially. There for that program. It's really important for every community across the state. So I wanted to also just talk for a second about taxes. We accelerated the pension and annuity tax exemption. That's really important for our retirees. We, I feel like if I need to still work, but we want you all to stay. And to do that, we need to make it more affordable to say that again. And today, we announced the rollout of the child, child income, the child tax rebate. It's a one-time rebate for our parents. I don't, we mentioned this childcare struggle, but families have been piecing together very expensive alternatives to childcare in this pandemic. So like, the amount of money I spend on childcare with daycare centers are closed down are horrific. And so this is a very small amount to support families. But it will make, I think, it will make people feel like a little bit here. And then the gas tax exemption. A lot of folks are calling and asking about a diesel tax exemption in the meantime. And I want folks to know that we're talking about that, thinking about that. But what we have right now is a really complicated influx of money in our transportation fund and our transportation fund balance in the state is funded through our transportation relief taxes. And all of the IIJ money related to transportation infrastructure requires local and state to match. So as we are debating iterations of tax relief for consumers, and some of them are more complicated than others to make happen, we have to keep in mind that we need to keep money in our transportation fund so that we can draw upon every penny the feds plan to send down to the states. Because we don't want, Connecticut already pays more taxes, that state federally, than we draw upon. We do not want East Windsor to pay more to the state than they pull down. We don't want the state of Connecticut to pay more federally than we pull down. We need to advocate that every taxpayer in our community gets everything that we're contributing to the system and that you would as financially unnumbered lies through governments as possible. And so that will be to make sure we can pull upon every penny that's available to us through the IIJ. So and then I will just say the low water bills all passed. And that really seemed like it almost wasn't going to happen in the end. Another thing that passed in the Senate on consent on the last day. But there's a lot of neighbors in our community who have contaminated wells. Agricultural contaminants and pesticides like E B Bs and TCPs and other things that are going, that are naturally occurring contaminants. And we are going to have to come to recognize what that means for our our community. But right now, one of those bills allows for PURA to advocate for the takeover of a community well system that's still unable to be there to expire a larger water company. So you have a community water association that does not help healthy portable water. And PURA can say, that hit water, acquire the system. And that makes who owns the loans to make the remediation process a lot easier, which is one of the things that we've been dealing with, it seems like. It will tell you every week, say, the nine people who live in mostly East Windsor, Arlington as well, who have contents in their wallet they never knew about. And we really appreciate if everyone of you told everyone of their neighbors on a private well to test their water. It's not structurally required. And we don't like to tell people to do what to do on their own property. I understand that to give you any value, but please test your water. Please know what you're drinking. People who are testing, who are just hearing me talk about this and hearing the Senator talk about it a lot, finding contaminants that they've been feeding baby bottles with, their family members with heart disease, breaking, test your water. And tell all your friends, and I believe on that note. But thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
On the pension?
Yeah.
What's the criteria, is it 100% reduction? And is there a dollar amount?
Okay. Yeah, I can send it to you within 56.
56?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The bao's bill was 51.
Yeah.
So so I saw a question from somebody, first of all, there are any other comments from the board? Questions?
Thank you. You guys did a lot this year.
Yeah.
You did one last year, too.
For the shortest session you can have, this was an incredibly productive one.
Things like Sarah carried over, picked up right where they left off last session. It was really, I feel like we kind of go on, we're all in safety sort of. And one of us stumbles and then they drug the time and someone catches it, great, good dynamic to go.
Thank you very much, Paul. Couple of questions from the audience.
I'd like to thank you for picking up on cancer, heart, or cancer. But also, I was wondering about the policeman's health. You know, I can add in the first response part. See the same thing.
Yeah, so I actually got a lot of emails about first responders having access to PTSD treatment. The first dispatcher having access. And it is a really complicated and loaded bill that has a lot of history that's before mine. And I felt really optimistic in the advocacy that I did on that bill, like other bills that was going to go. I only sort of uncovered the politics around it later on. And so I think I have a better plan of attack for next session for talking about that. But basically, there is a cost implication for it. And there is a very less coordinated advocacy for it. That's like what I will say constitutionally is the advocacy for dispatcher PTSD services is less. But interestingly, if I think about like the biggest law enforcement related tragedies in my neighborhood in the last year, the calls that the dispatchers received were horrible. For example, the child trafficking bill and that arrest when the arrest happened and that call went 911. The series of calls that led up to that. I imagine that those folks, not knowing what happened until the arrests were made a year later, actually being municipal calls. A lot of stress for those folks that they carried with them for a long time. So I'm totally with you. And I thought it had the same effect on a lot of the other first responder really bills had, but it didn't seem to. But I think I have my arms wrapped around it.
You mean it not?
I don't think it's about me. I think it's about government relations and advocacy being less sophisticated. The police have really good people doing their government relations. There's, and there's three different police groups that have that advocacy. They're really coordinated and they they have like different advocacy. Firefighters.
My point was that your volunteer departments don't really have a lot of coordination. Where a union department would.
Yeah, though maybe you benefit from the advocacy and please. I think, I think that might be what happens. Yeah, of course.
Paul Anderson, the 89 Main Street, real quick. The gasoline tax that's coming back July 1, 49?
It was extended.
Okay.
To January.
December.
December, December 31.
I missed that and what you said, thank you.
It was extended last month.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Keep on emailing me because all the things that we delivered and figured out was the same. You, the ideas come just from our friends, they all know, I guess, so thank you.
So I'd like to ask him to take a brief recess. Can I have a motion to recess till 8:35? All in favor?
Aye.
We are in recess at 8:29. All right, I'm going to reconvene for selecting, it's 8:36 PM. I'm asked, I'm going to ask now for a motion to go back to agenda item 8C, discussion of Winbrook Homes developers. I have a motion to go back to 8C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so as you folks know, there's been ongoing issues with development agreement between Mr. Von Hollander and Winbrook Homes and the town of East Windsor. We invited him to appear tonight. Early this afternoon, he notified me that he would not be here, but he would be represented by counsel. And after the, after consultation with the town attorney, that probably is not the most appropriate venue for an attorney conversation. We are represented by counsel in active litigation. So if we're going to be dealing lawyer to lawyer, place is not at a select one's. The latest contention is that the development, and I I wrote this down, it was my new favorite legal phrase. The development agreement that we're assisting upon is void ad initio, ab initio, which means that we don't have the, the contention that Mr. Von Hollander is making is that we don't have the legal standing to require a developer's agreement of this, despite the fact that dozens of towns in Connecticut require it. So as you can see, this is a circumstance that is likely to be litigated. And we are quibbling over nonsensities. But because it was on the agenda, I wanted to provide an update as to where that stood. Now, because we're just going to peck all over the place. I'd like to take up agenda item 9C, if I could.
Will we take up agenda item 9C?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, as I discussed at the outset of the budget process, we have an opportunity, I think, because of the circumstances around our budget. To move forward on planning for a community center. And there's been a lot of work done behind the scenes in order to do that. I wanted to share kind of where things stood and where I think we can go next from here. So these are the existing conditions at this senior center. You can see from the two pictures on the left that storage space is actually in the photo in the center as well. Storage space is incredibly limited in the existing footprint. Because of concerns around the COVID nineteen pandemic and the reorganization in the previous office space. We've actually lost a portion of the library that's been converted to additional cubicle space for employees. Which means that are already outdated and existing footprint is getting smaller. You can see from the picture on the lower left, that's the handicap accessible ramp to the building. Which is less than accessible for a number of participants to get access to the building. In the upper right and on the right hand side, you see examples of programming space that's currently used at the senior center. When, so the picture on the lower portion of the woman standing. That's actually in space that is no longer available to us because it has been converted into office space due to the, again, because of pandemic considerations. We have programming space that overlaps with dining space and dining space that overlaps with programming space. And limitations that say that we can only provide one activity at a time. The space is limited. It was, it was built for different considerations than for allowing and assisting in seniors aging in place. These are the current conditions at the town hall annex. What you see in the pictures on the left hand side is the use of the large meeting room for food aggregation. And general storage. The two photos in the center are students or children that are actually participating in parks and recreation programming there. The, the boy and the girl are actually doing programming activity in the same space where we would store food. And the two children that are at the top, in the top frame are actually doing an arts and crafts project in the hallway. Because that is the space that's available. The photo on the right is the, the meeting room at town hall annex where folks vote, set up for COVID nineteen vaccinations. So what we're, what I'm going to try and propose to the board of finance is that we can solve a couple of limitations and needs at the same time. We don't have sufficient programming space to provide multiple programs once. We don't have space that's accessible at either location for seniors, handicapped individuals, mothers with strollers and so on. We don't have the resources that we need to help people age in place, which is really where our older than average demographic is right now. Is trying to make sure that they're able to stay in their homes as they. As it stands, we have senior center clients that have to go to both the senior center and the annex. In order to sign up for and, and participate in programs that they need to help them to do that. We also have inadequate space for our parks and recreation activities, particularly programming space for summer camp activities during adverse weather. We, we do not have access to the schools. We do not have access to scout hall because ironically the school's rented. So when we have thunderstorms in the summertime, you have students who either have to have their programming canceled. Or hang out underneath the pavilion or, 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 or. We don't, we're not set up to deliver the services that are coming. So what we're going to try and do is solve a couple of problems. And here, here's what we can, we consolidate, we consolidated community services department a number of years ago under one umbrella, but they're still located in two places. Which leaves a disconnect between, to, to a certain degree between the department. A, a prime example of that is that Melissa has to literally carry her VOIP phone from one facility to another depending on the day that she is, that she's working where. So by putting these departments in the same place, we can consolidate senior services, social services and park and recreation in one place to realize efficiencies. You don't need three copiers when one will do. You don't need, you have an opportunity to cross train support staff so that they can support the work that each other's doing. It would provide spatial access for people of all, spatial access for people of all, all ages, which means it wouldn't be prohibitive to people who have limitations to actually get into the place. It provides a centralized location for community needs like the cooling center. We did food distribution during COVID. We did vaccine distribution during COVID. We did vaccine test distribution all at different places. And by doing the best we could with the resources that we have. But it created, if anybody who came and got their COVID tests, test kits at the beginning of the year knows that we had traffic backed up around the block and down the road. So what we're, what we're trying to do is find a place and invest in a place where we have ample, ample programming space, space for people of all ages. Senior center component during the day, parks and recreation activities and community group activities on nights. This also dovetails as Representative Foster and Senator O'Rourke said, with some of the other investments that are already happening at Apple Road. And that's the investment of lights on the soccer fields and certain other parks improvements that we have money for. We also, a number of years ago, put bathrooms in place outside for youth soccer. So this is what the photo would look like. This is an architectural rendering. We're almost done with the spec book so that we have all the engineering done to move forward. But what, what the plan would be is to do an addition around the existing scout hall building, a thirty foot addition in each direction. Which would provide for a six foot hallway and twenty four feet in each direction for additional office space and program space. This is a front rendering and a rear rendering of what the project would look like. This is what the floor plan would look like. And you can see that here is the existing building. So what we would do is we would bring it around to, to add additional office space, program space and storage space. So that we can maximize the resource. This is what a phase two would look like, which shows the addition that I just described to the existing building with the addition of a gymnasium at a point in time. Which I understand was one of the original plans for the facility. And we now have the architectural components to support that if there's an opportunity for grant funding or, or. This is a four directional view of what the addition would look like. On the top, you have the, what is a view of the front of the building. The second one down would be if you were looking to the west. Then the third one down is a view from the back and the fourth one down is if you were looking to the east. So Winterlax is doing the same thing or, or something similar. They just approved the construction of a senior center that would be about twenty thousand square feet. And cost about fourteen million dollars. What this plan would be would be a community center serving people of all ages in the community. The addition would effectively double the footprint of Scout Hall to fifteen thousand feet. And it would cost us five million dollars. Reason that it would cost us five million dollars versus Winterlax sport teams because the building is already there. The town already owns the property and the infrastructure there to support. Those are huge cost drivers that are eliminated. So how are we going to pay? And this is where it comes back to my budget proposal. I represented to the, to the public at the beginning of the process that I would, rather than the first selection, whoever is in the office typically going to the board of finance at the end of the fiscal year. If there's a surplus with a list of stuff that isn't thought out, that isn't strategic, that isn't organized. Rather than, than just spending money because we have money to spend. I asked, I'm going to ask them to take one point two million dollars from what would the town lapse back to the general fund. And put that into a C N R account for the construction or renovation of a municipal building. That would lower the cost from five million dollars down to three point eight million dollars. Now, why one point two million? So we are on pace as of the last budget run that the finance director provided me to lapse back at one point four million dollars. That is largely due to savings in our debt service and our health insurance actuals versus our budget. So the one point four million, the fund balance in order to stay within the policy that we just adopted can only take two hundred thousand dollars. And then we're in excess of our, of the cap available in our own established policy. So the one point two million dollars is a way of investing in an infrastructure, in, in a project that we would have to benefit the entire community. And we self fund it. And that's less that we have to borrow over time. That leaves us with three point eight million dollars that we need to find other places. The most straightforward approach to that is bonding. Here is a timeframe that this project would follow. In two weeks' time, I plan on asking for a finance for that one point two million dollar transfer. Sometime over the summer, this board and the scout hall building committee will have to come to terms on a lease agreement for the property. Because although the town owns the building, the scout hall building committee has a ninety nine year lease, of which there's about seventy seven years left. Sometime this summer, we'll have a town meeting on, on the question of whether or not to bond the difference. Which has to be completed by September eighth in order to make the November ballot. And then you'll notice the final notice of congressionally directed spending. That is the new known feature for earmarks. What I have submitted to our congressional delegations for different projects for earmark consideration. At least three of them are still under consideration and we won't know until sometime in Q four whether or not we got any of them. But in conversations in Senator Murphy's office, this project is still actively under consideration for congressionally directed spending. Which would equate to about fifty five percent of the total cost of the project. And then ultimately, this is a question that voters are going to decide. It's going to be, if all goes according to schedule and all goes according to the plans, it's a ballot question. The whole town will be able to consider the gubernatorial ballot on November. So, that's. So this isn't, isn't a surprise to you guys. You've all seen the initial renderings. We've made great progress in terms of getting a spec book ready to go. The quote is solid. It's architecturally, architecturally verified. That's, that's what, that's what we got. I want feedback from you guys, but I'm very excited. This section is something we can do with a very nominal impact on our constituents. And we're also going to do it, by the way, at, at a third of the price that the town of Winterlax is building effectively the same thing. Questions or comments?
Well, I mean, I know you and I talked about this, these comments more than once, plenty of times, and so I'll just bring them up. Two concerns that I have was. One. You know, we have a history of not taking care of what we have. And so we'll be adding something to take care of. And I thought maybe you could address that question and how we plan on dealing with that.
I'm very happy to address that question in executive session tonight.
Okay, then we can, we can have that conversation publicly later.
Yes.
And then.
We'll have to.
Yeah, and then the. And I know this will come later. Also is the, you know, the operational cost of this on an annual basis, an estimate that I think would be helpful for everybody. And I know that's down the road as well, but those are my two comments.
We'll have at least a reasonable assumption is what those, those would be. Because first of all, we know, well, we can find out how much it costs to operate scout hall now. So we'll be able to have a reasonable approximation, but that is before the voters are asked to vote on this at the town meeting in the summer, not at the vote in fall. Yeah, we'll get that. That's a good note that. We'll have to get that squared up.
I mean, I, I agree with the concept. I agree that we've outgrown the senior center and the annex. They're not really functional for the director in charge of all those departments. I do have a concern like Alan as to the operational costs and impact going forward. And then do we have any idea or plans on what we would want to be doing with the annex as it stands? And how in the senior center, what would they be utilized for going forward?
Well, there haven't been any formal conversations with either the broader fire department or the police department. But it would make logical sense that the broader fire department would take over the top floor of the space. Which could address some of the other concerns that have been raised over time there. And in terms of the, the town hall annex, we do have a need for, at, at least at the time being, for the preservation of the meeting room because that is the voting place. Now, that's not to say that that voting district couldn't be moved. There's a process to do that. As you have seen from our agenda, it's not an easy process and not everybody is being cooperative. But there is a process to do that. And I think that there are certain tiering accreditation that would, the police department would benefit from additional space. We also need emergency management space. So I think there is a natural synergy there. So I don't have a, a final plan on that yet, but there are plenty of ideas about not, certainly not mothballed either.
Well, she took one of my questions. And then I guess my other concern would be is that in the summertime, in, in clement weather, would we still have the same issue?
No, the school would be using the school grounds and, and. Well, so the way I envision it, the school would be using the school and the town would have access to the town's resource. But that is something that ultimately is going to have to be negotiated between us and scout hall in terms of the. I'm not there yet. I'm lining up the money first. You know, and, and there's, there is a sequential step here. You know, making sure that, that we, we are capturing the, the resources that we have available right now in terms of the surplus that we're going to lapse. Makes the most sense at this moment. The conversations that need to happen between the town and, and the scout hall building committee over the summertime. Need to happen over the summertime before we go to the voters. So I have, in my mind, there is a deadline that we cannot go past September first without having all of the questions we need to answer. Because if we're going to make the gubernatorial ballot, all of that needs to be done, including the verbiage by September. So we have a lot of work to do over the next ninety days in order to do that. I don't want to send something to the voters that is not a complete plan.
In regards to the senior center, that building was built, was built with grant money. So my understanding is grant money back whenever it was built.
Thank you.
Nineteen eight. Has that criteria been met? If you were to turn that building over to the fire department, it will still be the town, but let the fire department use the whole site. Would that create any issue legally with the transfer of that property or the use of that property that we would have to pay and grant money back years ago?
We wouldn't transfer the property, first of all, because we normally transfer to the town of town. Secondly, the grant was for a twenty year use. So when we got twenty thousand, the terms, the terms and considerations were satisfied.
I like the concept. You know, I, I think it's going to be a whole, more than just one department, it's going to be whole. The police department, fire department, my opinion.
I just like. So, when I was talking with Carolyn about this, because I, I wanted to, to talk with her before I talked to the board of finance on, or the second one's there. I wanted to make sure that she was comfortable with this in, in concept. And her comment was one that I agree with, which is this is, this is fine to do so long as we're not committing the money without asking the voters. And that, that is certainly not going to happen. We will ask the voters for their consent on the project. If they vote it down, we're done. I don't think they will though, because this, this has so much for any demographic in town. And it's at such a reasonable price that we'll never have this opportunity yet. Any other feedback on this?
Should we make, should we commit phone calls in regards to Murphy's office and encourage to grant money?
No, that's not how the process works. So, so the way congressionally directed spending works, the four projects that I submitted were for the emergency radio system. The scout hall building committee, or the scout hall construction project. School Hill Water Association. And the trial. And when I, when I submit the applications, you need to basically select which category. What you're doing there is you're flagging for the congressional offices, which congressional subcommittee it's going to. I will tell you that there is a lot of competition for JAG grants, which is the bucket of money that the emergency radio system falls into. It's just, there's just a lot. It's just, there's just a lot of competition for it and anybody can apply for it. This one would fall under the USDA Subcommittee for Community Facilities. That has a population threshold of twenty five thousand people or less. And there's not many towns with twenty five thousand or less that are looking to do municipal building construction and renovation. So there is significantly less competition here than with some of the other budgets that we follow. So I'm optimistic, but we can't bank on it. It's not something that's, it's not a done deal. What we know is the cost of the project is five million dollars. What we know is we can take one point two million of that off the table to start. So that's less of an impact on our debt service over time. Now, that would leave us worst case scenario, and, and I don't expect that we would be at this, but it would leave us worst case scenario having a bottom three point million dollars worth. That only eats up, well, that still leaves us with more than six million dollars worth of bond capacity existing, which is more than enough money to do the radio system and put a roof on the high school and have additional in case we needed borrow. To say nothing, we'll go back to the fund balances again, we're busting.
You're looking at me.
Okay, so let's move on to the next thing. Um, all right. Well, since we're just. Let's go to eight D. Can I have a motion to take up agenda item eighty? All in favor? Okay, so this is discussion on the next steps of what to do pertaining to the casino problem. As Senator Onward outlined, there have been conversations with the tribes individually and jointly. There have been conversations with the administration and the long and short of this, absolutely nothing has happened. Nor does it seem that anything is likely to happen. We are in year, ju- just now, we are in year two of a ten year moratorium on construction of a gaming facility on that parcel. But it's, and that's, that's because of last year's sports betting legislation. But it's important to note that in that legislation, there was no prohibition on anything else zoning appropriate going. So to, to kind of highlight the jeopardy faced by the town with nothing happening there. When there was a vacant lighted movie theater, sorry, when there was a vacant lighted movie theater on that parcel, we saw, we realized a hundred and forty thousand dollars in that. When the, when the movie theater came down, we are now facing eighty thousand dollars in revenue. So every year that nothing happens there, there is a sixty thousand dollar loss to the town. There's no, there's no economic development happening. There's no job growth happening. It is a lighted property that I, tongue in cheek, will say it looks like this, the scene where they shot it too much.
Three houses.
Well, the point being, the only, i- if the state's not going to help us despite Senator Onward, Representative Foster, Representative Hall's best efforts. And that also has been a bipartisan effort. The administration has not shown any interest in helping the town. The two tribes have not shown any interest in doing anything at all. The only option left to us to force anything to happen is to begin the process of eminent domain. And as the town attorney presented to us when he came to, to meetings ago, there's a process for that. The first process, the first part of that process would be to establish redevelopment authority concerning one oh five Prospect Road. What that would require is we would need to send the town meeting the question of whether or not we should set redevelopment authority for that parcel. So we've talked about this. We had a presentation from the town attorney outlining the legal process and, and our likelihood of success. This actually got deleted by COVID. I was intending to do this last time, but. What are your thoughts? I was thinking maybe you can talk about it first.
Can we review the expectation of success?
Hi, so Josh, according to what Josh had told me, from a legal standpoint, we are on a solid ground. The thing that they can haggle over and litigate is the last part of the process, which is where you take the cradles and then you have to negotiate with the party that you're, you're taking. But to get to a point in time, this would only be beneficial if we had a third party off taker at the end of the process. It's not in the town's interest to go through eminent domain and then end up with a piece of property that we just paid six, seven million dollars for, that we can't do. So I've had conversations with now three different developers, all of whom are interested in the property and have made clear that they are not deterred by the process of eminent domain. Most recently, last week, last week, Ruth Calabrese and I had a, a driving tour with one of the developers who was redoing some of the downtown Hartford stuff, particularly the apartment housing around Duncan Donuts Park. And I asked him, point blank, you know, if the town were to go through an eminent domain process, does that scare people in your, in your industry away? And he said, quite the opposite, shows that the town is interested in seeing something happen. So the, that part of the process actually probably sends the right signal that, that we want to see something there. The other two developers that, that I met with, one was Boston based, one was Texas based, showed up to the meeting with conceptual. So they, they were as serious as could be if they could get their hands on that property. And then, so, so everybody knows with the likely, with the market demand for that likely is, it would be high end apartments or distributions. Those are, those are where the markets are. It would not be something like a, a movie theater or a mall or probably most retail. The market is demanding the distribution and how.
I'm definitely in favor of taking the next steps. The property is not being maintained. It is lighted, as you said. And to be in year two of ten, nothing happening. And as you said, no job growth, no economic development there right off the highway is just unacceptable. So I think we do need to take the next steps to move forward.
Yeah, it's, I think it's a hazard and what's it going to look like in ten years? Be back to forest.
Well, we're going to get them for the height of the grass, but.
We still got the vegetation problem.
Okay, so.
As I've said before, I mean, not only is it, you know, not producing, it's, it's, it's like the gateway to our commercial zone and it looks like hell. You know, so it's probably impeding, as well as not producing, it's probably impeding for the developer. I think something needs to be done.
I think that the motion should be to move to recommend to the town meeting the creation of redevelopment authority concerning one oh five Prospect Road and to empower Board of Selectmen to seek necessary membership, not to exceed nine people, to take all appropriate action to investigate the use of eminent domain on the subject parcel and recommend appropriate steps and where is what. Yeah, so, so the. So what would happen is, once the town meeting establishes the redevelopment authority, the Board of Selectmen needs to populate it. Then the redevelopment authority needs to do their work, which has to come back after Board of Selectmen before it can be forwarded back to the town meeting, which is what the statute requires. All of the decision making around the taking, whether or not to do it, the pricing, the final execution, all of that has to be decided by town. That's what the statute requires. What we would be doing is facilitating the town meeting's decision-making process.
Just step one.
Yes.
Make a motion to recommend to the town meeting the creation of the redevelopment authority. Move to recommend to the town meeting the creation of redevelopment authority concerning one oh five Prospect Road and to empower the Board of Selectmen to seek the necessary membership, not to exceed nine people, to take all appropriate action to investigate in the use of the eminent domain on the subject parcel and recommend appropriate steps to Board of Selectmen.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. I vote yes. Here is your unanimous. Hey, I'm typing it up and sending it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, a while back, well, back in April, we sent out a community survey on how best to use the remaining ARPA funds. So this is a, it is languished a little bit, but I didn't want this to go on too much longer. So I did an initial analysis for someone to show. These are the, these are the comments that were submitted, so you all can see. And, and there's a method behind that. This is the reason why I'm handing this out. So first, let me show you the.
This is just the raw data. There's no totals.
I got it here. So, um, first, we had seven hundred responses to the survey. We sent out about just shy of nine thousand. We got seven hundred of them back, all but eight of them identified with a name and address. So for the purposes of the rough analysis that I did, I took the eight that did not identify themselves out because we couldn't verify one person one vote. So I couldn't tell for sure if they hadn't submitted something. So there's six hundred and ninety two responses that are aggregated here. And this is the age distribution that follows the same chart that I did for the budget presentation. We stole it from third up data. You can see of the seven, of the six hundred and ninety two, fifteen of them were under twenty five years old. Roughly ninety one of them were between the ages of twenty five and forty five, seventy five, or between forty five and fifty four. Hundred and sixty seven were between fifty five and sixty four, and everybody else was over the age of sixty five. There were also sixteen who did not, and by. So this is a demographic breakdown by age and by percentage of respondents in each demographic. So of the responses, let me, let me remember how I did this. Okay, so on the left is a breakdown of where the population in East Windsor is. So twenty point seven percent of our population is over sixty five years old. Twenty one point six percent of our population is between the ages of twenty five and thirty four. That's what the town of East Windsor looks like on an age basis. Percentage of respondents in each demographic is the percentage of those respondents in that age group who turned something. So one point eight percent of our eighteen, twenty four year olds responded. Sixteen point five percent of our sixty five plus residents responded. That's what, that's what that breakdown. This is just another way of looking at saying, uh, data percentage of response by age. Forty seven percent of the total responses were from sixty five people who were sixty five and older. Twenty four point one, fifty five to sixty four, two point three percent of the responses were from eighteen, twenty four year olds and so on and so forth. But this is really, really the important part. These are the average scores of, on a scale of one to five for each of the six options that were put forward. So with, with five being the highest available score, hard infrastructure score of four point one two percent. And the not all important to very, very important. Quality of life, three point seven eight, private community investment, two point nine two, tourism, three point oh three, environmental quality, three point eight seven, and hazard pay, two point six one. That's it. Now, there's seven hundred sets of comments here that I have not had an opportunity to, to cluster up. And, but I wanted to provide the raw data so that at least you guys had a chance to dive in. By the time we meet again, I'm hoping that I will be able to say that the prevalent response was sidewalks as an example. And that's, that's actually one of the real ones from just the online submissions. Sidewalks and walking trails were pretty frequent with the online responses. So you guys can see what everybody submitted. We can all take a look in a little bit of a deeper dive for the next time that we talk about this. But as you can see, we're going to have some decisions with two point one million dollars available to us that must be spent by the end of calendar twenty six. We have to decide whether we're going to do one big project, a couple of medium sized projects, or a bunch of small projects. And I think there's no wrong answer, but that's really a, a policy determination we're going to have to come to is which direction are we going to go? So what I wanted to do is provide you with the comments, with a quick overview of this, so that we can, you know, do a deeper dive into it over the next couple of weeks. So we can get a sense of where you think people are based on the words that they actually said. And then we can try and make, uh, sort of informed guess from there. Okay. Questions or comments on this?
We can't wait to read through it, actually.
There, there are a couple of them that are particularly pointed about me, so I'll enjoy those. And I'll say, there were a couple of relatively nasty comments, but they're in there. And I wanted to make sure that that was done so that nobody could say that this was scrubbing the door. What people wrote is printed, is printed in. What people wrote is printed and presented in front. You know what? I will have to look into that and of course, comes to work, so I'll have to email you a better one. Yeah, some of them that is not the point. Okay, so there are going to be a couple of, I see what happens. It didn't fit in itself. It's there. It's in the database. So I'll have to, I'll print you guys new ones. And it'll be beginning, so you can see what they actually said. That's interesting.
They actually see a number of people saying something to do with something with the old cookie dude.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And so I, I read through the comments that were submitted online. There were 150 responses that were submitted online, and the things that jumped out at me were sidewalks and all. So let's, without, just using those for, for example purposes, not committing to it, of course, but you know how expensive it is to build a walking trail? Buy a bot, right? That's, am I right, Joe?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know you wrote that.
In order to build a walking trail, you buy a bot and.
Bob, get with the plan on the front of it.
Do we own? No, no, we don't. So at that point, you got.
Well, you're going to have to land a walk on first.
What's that?
Got to have the land to walk on first.
We have billion land. We have acres and acres and we have over 74 acres of land, not including parks and, and we have a lot of land. So, but that's an example of something that we got a lot of responses on that we could actually do for a very modest investment in this, in the school things with the $2.1 million. Funding source of it. What's a, what's a bot cat cost?
We buy a, we can buy a box state, which is only about $23,000 plus.
So for, for $50,000. Sidewalks are a different story. And while sidewalks were something that came up a bunch, we actually had to rebid the South Warehouse Point sidewalk project. The last bit that we did, we had, how many responses? None, not one response. So we have a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of work to be done and nobody did it. And that's representative of a larger problem. So that's, that's that on the survey for now. I'll, I'll figure out the cell.
A lot of people don't want us to build any more solar projects.
Okay. Next up is an application for alcohol exemption at the town park for a wedding and a reception. Person who submitted the request is Irene Mosher. You probably know her as one of the ladies who works in Parks and Recreation, does a great job there. She's got a family wedding. She's looking at a host who wants to be able to do beer or. It's been approved by everybody else. Just waiting for my signature. Date is September 24th.
Make a motion that resets the application for the exception that establishes.
There a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Last week, Diversity Council held, and it was grant funded through the Greater Together Community Foundation. They held a conversation on diversity, equity, and inclusion. That was attended by about 30 people between staff and members of the public. It was a fantastic discussion. It is part of a three-part series that is provided through this group called Executive Mommy Group. They're the ones who furnished the facilitier. She's an educator in town of Manchester. She did, and a former school psychologist, and she did an absolutely great job of facilitating a great discussion. So with the, because the presentation wasn't as good as it was, while, while she was here, I asked her to get a contract for the next conversation. So we can keep it going. As I said, it's part of a three-part series. So this contract that's before you would be for parts two and three of it. The total cost is $3,000. As I said, we have quite a healthy balance in the, in the general fund right now that we're going to be turning back. It seems like a perfectly appropriate use of some of that. It's a very small amount of what we're turning back. I wanted it to strike while the iron was hot, make sure we could schedule them for the next conversation and the one after that. Questions or comments?
I had a death in the family, so I was sorry to miss, I was planning on attending, but I wasn't able to go. So I'm glad to hear that there were, you know, 30 people there. And I think since we have a diversity council, it's great to see that they're active in trying to get things like this going. So I think it's, it's a good thing.
Other comments?
Make a motion to authorize the first likely sign the proposal for diversity inclusion gated workshop series and not at $3,000.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I'm glad to see that there was a good term because that would point my concerns. I know I was on, if Sarah was on death about night two, because I can, I saw this. But I was looking, looking on to do some research on the organization, and the webpage really doesn't tell me a whole lot other than the four people and their history. Am I missing a list of clients or anything?
I don't think they have a list of clients on their website. Chairman's or, yeah. I don't think they have a list of clients on their website. I know them through somebody who's done a lot of this kind of work around the state. And they have, they have a really high, they're really held in high regard in that state. Funny name for a consulting group like this. EMG group is, is Executive Mommy Group. We could tell you how it might have started, but they're really qualified skilled facilitators with, with a long experience and a strong reputation.
And I found a list of clients that include shipping, Goodwood, Yale, Samsung, Facebook, University of Hartford, Providence College, EverSource, Sirius XM, Republican Schools.
So this is going to be our national program, right? Or is it off there? I know that he's starting to page, but.
Sort of timeframe as to when the other presentations will occur?
I'm going to cover the money this year and then scheduling permits over the course of summer so that it doesn't become a budgetary issue. But next year could be July. You know, there's not, we don't have a date set. I think there's intention to do it soon.
Relatively soon, yeah.
Like finish the series in the calendar year kind of a thing?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, where are we now? Second reports. I want to start off by recognizing two longtime town employees whose time working with us is coming to an end. Keith Tietrow retired on May 13th after nearly 30 years caring for Parks and Recreation facilities in town. And at the end of June, Sergeant Jeff Rimer will be retiring after 27 years of dedicated service to our police department. We wish them both many happy years with their families in retirement. On May 24th, the town's emergency management team held a tabletop exercise planning for weather related events to impact town of East Windsor. In this case, the drill was a hurricane. There are, these are an opportunity to get emergency management personnel together to brainstorm reactions to potentially real world scenarios, making us more prepared if and when they happen. Thank you to Houston's Police Department, Warehouse Point Fire, Upper Fire, East Windsor EMS, Public Works, Community Services, the Town Finance Department, and Dr. Tejum for participating. Later that same day, Director of Planning and Community Development, Calabrese, and I hosted a prominent developer operating, operating in a tri-state area on a driving tour of East Windsor. We shared some of the strategies that we're employing as the means of encouraging economic development in the community and took the opportunity to show him a potential development opportunities in town. These in-person small visits are key to demonstrate that East Windsor really is open for business, and we do them as regularly as we can set them up. On May 26th, through the generosity of the Greater Together Fund, the Diversity Council held an excellent workshop on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Again, about 30 people participated in an interactive and enlightening conversation. On the 27th, the East Windsor Senior Center dedicated a memorial garden in honor of the senior center members that we've been unable to mourn together over the span of the COVID pandemic. We celebrated too many familiar names and names of people who, who we all truly miss. There were two wonderful memorial day festivities this weekend, on Sunday in Melrose and another in Warehouse Point on Monday. Thank you to those who took the time to participate and thank you to those American soldiers that we honor. On Tuesday of this week, we hosted Matt Hart, who is the new executive director of the Capital Regional Council of Governments. He's formerly the town manager in West Hartford, formerly the town manager in Mansfield. He is, in my opinion, he is the smartest guy in any group he's in, but he will not tell you that. He is bright and humble, and he's got a great vision for how Crowe can be used as a way of encouraging regionalism in such a way so that we still preserve municipal identities. I think that is really the, the key to moving that stuff forward. So it was great to have that. Just around the corner is our first summer concert of the year, which is scheduled for June 16th at East Windsor Park. We have an exciting schedule of dance to play each Thursday throughout the summer. Residents are invited to join festivities and bring their families in a picnic. We are looking forward to another great year. Two other things that I would point out that, that are not actually written in my report, but on June 6th and on June 16th, the town and the lieutenant governor will be honoring veterans of the Green War and the Vietnam War respectively. The sixth will be at the high school auditorium. The 16th will be on the soccer field behind the school the day after graduation. So we're expecting a small turnout, obviously for the Green War veterans, as that war was now 70 years ago. And a large turnout for the Vietnam celebration. So I am going to cancel our meeting on the 16th because of that. So if you folks are available to join for either vote, you're certainly welcome, and they should be nice commemorations for those folks. Finally, on the 25th, two things on the 25th. The town and our local animal control officers will be sponsoring Araby's Vaxiloo Clinic for dogs and cats. The clinic will be held at town hall from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. During that time, the town clerk's office will also be open to anyone who still needs to register their dogs. And the last thing, also on the 25th, is what Representative Foster dropped off tickets to a fundraiser in support of the Connecticut Trial Museum, sponsored by the Connecticut Engineers, the Society of Civil Engineers. It's hosted by Representative Foster, Representative Paul Center, I'm our, myself, and the Society of Social, Civil Engineers suggested donations are 50 to 250. It's going to be a fun night. Drinks, silent auction, food. The governor's coming, Commissioner Transportation is coming. So there is an opportunity to get some face time in front of them, which will certainly be a little more awkward now. But we're going to.
Have a, I put a yes button for the.
Okay, I'm still waiting for Melissa to play my 20 minutes for reading. She's telling me no.
I never respond.
This was probably COVID camp too. That's all I have, Marie.
Since our last quarter's select meeting, I was honored to be able to attend the senior center memorial garden dedication fall. I lost my life since 2020. Hopes Cup Pack 89 was held by the community through this garden reserves to be recognized for their continued community involvement. They also attended the Memorial Day services in number also warehouse point. Both organizers, the justice to the memory of those who Sergeant lost their lives for our freedom. On May 27, 2022, I attended the water pollution control authority meeting. Chairman Anderson provided a draft mission statement along with recent news articles relating to surrounding towns water pollution control authority updates. There were no new applications. A public hearing was held for a revision to the so use charges. Most were made and included in management to institute a rate of $416 per so you reserve unit. It is important to know the water pollution control authority has no debt service. This is the first increase in two years, but due to cost inflation for material that was being justified. Harry Lane, Mill Street, Scenic Road pump stations are either being rebuilt or replaced on this year, so.
Okay, so because of personal family issues, I've had to miss a number of meetings, but I have been following the meetings that I do miss, following the minutes and so I'll just kind of go over some of that. Planning and zoning I had to miss, but they did have an interesting conversation about affordable housing that, you know, East Windsor is actually over the state limit, but there is a number of households in, in East Windsor that are cost burdened. So it's not something actually I thought about in affordable housing, but it was an interesting set of statistics that they had. Wetlands Commission was last night. We, and I did, I was able to attend it. The, we have a lot going on as far as applications go, but there's a lot of work being done in the, in violations basically. And so, you know, it really struck me as going through the meeting last night, the staff that we have now, but, and where we were three and a half, four years ago, five years ago, when I was on, you know, I was chair at the time. You know, the Wetlands Committee was shouldering the burden for handling all the violations that were coming in. And now we have just processes and people working on it, and things are just getting done and getting done well. The addition of the fee ordinance, I think, has helped put a little bit of backbone behind what we're asking people to do. So although we have not had to do any fees on anybody, I think it, it has helped bring people to the table to get things done. So really, really happy with the way that the planning offices has come together over the last few years. The Ag and Conservation Committee continues to work on the 38 year farmland thing, which I know you're not very, really extremely happy about, but they did.
What they're doing is I'm concerned that it's going to work to prosper and improve what they're trying to achieve.
Sure. They, they did put together a letter that they want to, I think they'll be bringing it to us. I'm not sure exactly their plans at this point in time, but they want to publicize. And basically they're looking for more support from the public in preserving, you know, land, farmland, open space, forest land, whatever. So I just actually, they were gracious enough to let me have some input to that letter, and I was going to just read it to you guys. Just so you know when it's coming, because this will be on Facebook and other places. So East Windsor has a long and continuing history as a rural farming town. Town character has always been what its residents cherish about living here and nurtures their spirits and souls. The highly productive soils and scenic vistas are an important part of the fabric of life here. However, the open space and farmland are being lost at a rapid rate. Our opportunities for conservation are diminishing rapidly with the passage of time. East Windsor's location in the Connecticut River Valley means it has some of the best farmland in the world. Anyone who has farmed. Anyone who has farmed in a town with rocks, ledge, and steep slopes on can see how East Windsor is flat, virtually rockless and deep agricultural soil is a treasure worth preserving for current and future generations. The valley soil carved out by glaciers with deposits of rich sediment cannot be duplicated, only preserved. When it is gone, it is permanently gone. Conservation of open space provides benefits for residents for years to come. Improved quality of life and increased property values result when we act to preserve the health of our watersheds and aquifers. Aquifers. Preservation of open spaces provides room for local agriculture and diverse wildlife habitats, enriching the lives of town residents. Preserved open space and farmland are also less expensive to taxpayers as they demand few public services such as police protection schools, public utilities, road maintenance, et cetera. Many property owners in East Windsor have legacy farms or property that has been passed down to them for generations. There may be sentimental connection to the property and the family may wish to preserve it, not sell it for development. Some town farms could use an infusion of money to keep going. Selling the property's development rights could provide a solution to these issues. The owner is still free to sell the property at any time while assuring it can't be developed. Several times in town, several, several farms in town have been protected from development in just such a way. This process used funds from the town's open space fund. As a result, that fund is now too low to do much good. The last eighteen months, well over five hundred acres of open space in town has been committed to solar installations. Due to Connecticut law, the town has little control where these installations go. The bottom line is, is that we as town value preserving farms and forests and we need to replenish our open space fund. If we choose to commit some of our tax dollars to the open space fund, we may be able to buy the farmland before the solar corporations do. If you're interested in learning more about preserving open space, the town East Windsor Conservation Commission can help point you in the right direction. The Connecticut Farmland Trust is a booklet that outlines ways to preserve farm. The Connecticut Department of Agriculture has several preservation programs. Town of East Windsor, using its open space fund, can partner with Connecticut D to purchase properties for preservation. The Northern Connecticut Land Trust can also be consulted. The property could be sold to the trust to preserve it. The land could also be donated with the right mechanisms, tax deductions can be achieved. In a short time period, it is, short a time period, as one more generation, we may lose most of the open space apartment that we have left. Together, as residents and town leaders, we can find ways to increase our open space fund and offer assistance to residents who want to preserve the best of East Windsor. Yeah, there's a couple, a couple little edits left to do. Final should be ready. I will let them do it.
But well, it's far minus going, so. Sir?
Based on the way my meeting schedule falls, I really don't have a report. I will have a long one next time. But I just want to commend the Veterans Commission on doing such a great job for the ceremony and parade on Monday. And it was great to see so many people out participating and watching this year.
I felt there were more people.
Yes, it was great.
Charlie?
On the twenty third, I attended the East Windsor BMX and State Park Committee meeting. At the meeting, they elected Brenda Crockett, their committee chair. Lori Gabrielle was elected vice chair and Rebecca Crockett was elected secretary. Their annual rubber duck race will be held on June twenty sixth at one PM in collaboration with American Heritage River Commission's Carbo Boat Race. It will also be holding a bottle and can dry fundraiser at town hall on July ninth from nine to twelve. And the committee has also started a Facebook page, so anyone interested in following them and their events can get more info. On May twenty fifth, I attended the Board of Education meeting at the East Windsor High School. They reported that schools have completed the state testing for this year. Senior graduation ceremonies are gonna take place on June fourteenth and the last day of classes for all grades will be June sixteenth. In regards to financials, the new financial advisor is still working hard on getting the Board of Education financials reconciled properly categorized and reported. And they believe that currently they are on budget to adequately satisfy the rest of the school year. And I too on Memorial Day marched in Memorial Day Parade in Warehouse Point. It was great to see a large number of community members out and participating in events paying tribute to our fallen soldiers. And I'd also like to thank our Veterans Commission for putting on another great parade in San.
One of the things that struck me about the ceremony in particular was the precise timing of the flyer. Like, the cadence was perfect. It felt to me like the plane was waiting behind the building, which I know, I know was not the case, but it was absolutely tick tock perfect.
So I thought last year it was perfect because last year it came over exactly while Katie was in the middle of singing one of the songs.
Oh, that's true too.
And this year, he was in the middle of introducing someone. It was good that he was, he was introduced to the battalion commander as it flew by. So it was good there, but I still thought it was better last year with her singing as they flew over. It made it seem like you were at like a stadium event, you know, where they're singing the National Anthem, the Blue Angels go by. Yes, they were kind of left behind.
Oh, yeah. The fire department wasn't back yet because I think they stopped with that medical emergency. So they were a little ninety five. Yeah. By the way, the person who was treated was fine. Okay, public participation is the second, second opportunity for the public to address members. Board, is there anybody from the public who would like to address the board? Okay. We will have an executive session. It will include just the five of us. Don't expect action to follow. Have a motion for an executive session?
We go into executive session.
The second?
Second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session at nine forty five. Hey, I'll try and get this up and see if I can.